Well, it's not a letter.
Maryline.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, it is. Hi, could you please sign in? Thank you, boys. Ooh, you had me worried. Okay, it's seven o'clock. I now call this board meeting order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cook, will you please take roll? Everybody who's present? Okay, thank you. Is there any new business to bring before the board? Okay, hearing none, I would seek a motion for approval of the agenda. I have a motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Geist. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is, Mr. Hughes is here to present our state participant recognition. Spring sports, right?
Yep.
Spring sports, okay.
Hi, it's my pleasure and privilege to recognize our various activities that participated in the state tournament this spring. We're gonna start with boys golf. Of course, some people can't make it today. Busy time of year, of course. In fact, our golfer was at a golf tournament today, so he is not around to tell about it. But the state golf tournament was held at ridges of St. Creek in Jordan on June 10th and 11th. And Austin Walker finished 58th place with a two-day total of 161. Finished with a 78th first day and then an 83rd day two. Coach Dave Hanzi said golf, well, is short game. Put him down a couple of times throughout the day. So congratulations to Austin and Anthony's state tournament.
I know they have that, they have that course on a pretty tough too.
Well, next is boys and girls track. I know Coach Holth is in England, so he's not able to join us tonight. And Coach Meyer must have been busy as well. But we had 23 athletes compete in 14 different events at state meet on Wednesday, June 11th and 12th at St. Michael Elbertville. Came home with various medal winners. Our 200 meter, in the girls 200 meter dash, Avery Nelson placed fifth. In the girls high jump, Audrey Schindler placed ninth. And they can play the medal nine places. Girls discus, we came home with the state champion Ella Thebal. In that same event, Dana Kishindalar placed fifth. The boys four by two meter relay was eighth place. That's Luke Eastman, Dylan Scanlon, Sawyer Wood, and Carson Meyer. Our boys four by eight meter relay was eighth place. That's Josh Langseth, Asher Langseth, Nolan Schatz, and Jack Owen. Where's Nolan? Come on up.
Yay, Nolan.
Come on up. The boy shot put, Rich Hatch placed seventh in the same event. Tommy Lockton placed ninth. And the two boys also placed in the discus. Rich placed third with Tommy placing seven. So congratulations Nolan on your wonderful achievements this season and at the state tournaments as well. I don't know if you have any questions or want anything to say, Nolan, but.
Did you set the new school record? Well, hey, that's awesome. Okay, he's done.
He didn't have many words. Okay, we'll move on to baseball. Tonight, we do have Coach Schmitz and two of his captains with us in Luke Hebel and Jace Klug. So guys, come on up. So our baseball team competed in the state tournament for the first time in school history on June 11th and 12th. And that was in Jordan and Chaska. The team lost their opening round game to the eventual runner-up, Mankato East. And then lost their second game at the Grand Rapids the next day, 10 to zero. While the results didn't go in the favor of these guys here, they did represent our community extremely well. So congratulations, guys, on a wonderful season.
I don't know much to say other than the fact that we had a fun year. You know, I think the guys learned that it's not necessarily how you start. You start out the season 0-6. Knowing that eventually we ended up making the state. We played well, we meshed at the right time. And it goes to the dedication of, we had a great group of senior leaders. We don't have, he said captains, I'm not gonna play off. We don't have captains because anyone can lead. And these two are more great leaders for our team as well as the other four seniors. And because of their buy-in, they were able to, you know, keep everyone together through the tough times and eventually play ball with the best when it mattered most.
Congratulations.
Wait, did someone get a home run? Their first home run. It's so important, that was great.
Thanks, guys. And finally, we'll recognize clay targets. So clay targets competed really two weeks, two weeks in a row. They competed in the Class 7A state with 25 teams. And the result were in three different categories. So in trap, they finished first in the 7A with a score of 490 out of 500. And you'll find later that those top 40 teams then competed here just the other day on the 20th. We'll figure out, we'll see how that turned out there. Top performers in the trap category were Kayden Nagle with 100 out of 100. Hunter Heisel had 99 out of 100. Jackson Hewitt, Ty Brown, and Brayden Steer finished 97 out of 100. And then the novice, they took second place overall as well. In the five stand results, they placed first with a 392 out of 500. Top performance again, Jackson Hewitt, 80 out of 100. Ethan Nagle, Logan Johnson, or Jackson, sorry. Hunter Heisel, 79 out of 100. And Owen Cycle was 75 out of 100. And finally, the sporting clays results, again, finished first with a score of 415 out of 500. That's out of 20 teams. The top performers were Hunter Heisel, 92. Ethan Nagle at 83. Kayden Nagle, 100, uh, I'm sorry, 81. Logan Jackson, 80. And Owen Cycle, 79. And the results of the June 20th meet at the state clay target competition. The Tigers finished fourth place out of the 39 teams that ended up going, which is an outstanding feat. They lost to like South Park Rapids, Spring Grove, Lakeville South, just to name a few there. But congratulations to our trap, our clay target participants that did a wonderful job at the tournaments. And that's what we have for our state recognitions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming, that's awesome, see.
It was a great spring.
It sure was.
Thank you.
Nolan, you stay there, you go.
All right, next item on the agenda would be consent agenda items 7A through D. Is there any item any board member would like removed and discussed separately? Okay, hearing none, I would seek a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Ravenhorse and a second by Ms. Kiefer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item eight. Consider and approve the retirement of Superintendent Belinda Selfers effective on June 30th, 2026. And the letter was attached. Which we appreciate. Is there just nothing, anything? Just have to consider and approve? I mean, I would like to just say that I appreciate you giving us notice and helping us get the ball rolling on the next steps, guidance, I guess. And then the board takes off. Okay, is there any other discussion or we didn't approve?
I'll make the motion to approve Ms. Selfers' retirement on June 30th, 2026.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Laumann. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Congrats.
Yeah, congrats. One more year.
Don't take my vote as a, I want to.
Yeah, no. Okay. All right. High student achievement tonight, we don't have anything, so we'll skip down to item 10. A safe welcoming learning environment. And we have several handbook revisions under item A. They're all together. These were all attached for you to look at. Is there any discussion, questions?
Those were just the changes, right?
Yeah, the rest of the handbooks would be the same. But attaching the entire volume of handbook would be overwhelming. So what they submitted were just any reductions, revisions, additions.
When do they get finalized? I'll admit, I looked through them, but it was brief. Going through them again, maybe a little bit more thoroughly, when would that?
So your group tonight will give them the signal to start to read the changes. We're hoping to get everything uploaded to their webpages by the first part. So if you have questions, you can certainly reach out to the administrators that put those together.
Thank you.
That was a good question, thank you. If there's any other discussion, I would seek a motion.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geist and a second by Mr. Ravenhorse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is aim three, effective and efficient operations. First is item A. Consider and approve the food service contract with Tahoe, and this is a yearly decision. Right. The next time that this comes forward, you'll be going on the bid. This is the last year of the renewal. Are there any questions? Okay, I would seek a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Kiefer and a second by Mr. Geist. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda would be to consider and approve the transfer of ownership and contract from Grisom Bus Company to Schmitty and Sons Transportation Company. And this was attached and we were all informed of the sell, or sale, I should say. Before we vote, we would like Catherine. Catherine and Bill are here from Schmitty and Sons. And Bill has voted for Catherine to come up and speak.
Good evening, thank you Chair and Board members. My name is Catherine Ford Ward. I'm here representing Schmitty and Sons. We are an employee-owned company that's based here in Minnesota. We are founded, our operation is founded in Lakeville, Minnesota, so not too far away. But we are very, you know, proud to hopefully move forward with this opportunity. We, Bill, myself, have had the pleasure of knowing the Grisms for quite a while now through the industry. And so we're really excited for this venture and to be able to work amongst all of you and hear of answering questions that they may have. But we really, really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. And we look forward to our long partnership here and serving your community, so.
If you have any questions for Catherine, we've met a couple of times. And so administratively, we're very comfortable with this moving forward. And want to congratulate Kurt and Connie on many, many years of service to our community and our kids. And.
How many years, Kurt? 41, we're completing as well. We're down to 40 signatures.
So they'll still be, they'll still be connected to the transportation for our kids. But the ownership of the public of Schmitty and Sons. So if you have questions, this would be a great opportunity for you to ask them, Catherine, face to face.
So I'm assuming Kurt, Connie, and Brian are still in the day-to-day management?
Yes. Yep, the goal is to really keep everything, you know, intact as it is. But, you know, allow Kurt, Connie the opportunity to.
You think he works? Every once in a while, I do.
Well, we're excited to welcome you to Sturco as a board and as a community. And I know that there's going to be a press release and a letter to the parents coming out with more info later this summer. But we're excited to welcome you and for the remainder of the contract and hopefully many years to come. After we vote, if we could just get a picture since Jen's not here.
Jen's not here.
She's on vacation.
Bill is a bill?
Yes.
And Kurt and Connie, if we could get the pictures. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty big deal, I think, that, you know, with Kurt and Connie doing this for so long.
Yeah.
We'll want to make sure we take a picture after we vote.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so I would seek a motion.
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geist and a second by Mr. Ravenhorse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. Motion carries seven zero. We can grab a picture in case you want to scoot out or stay for the rest of the meeting, whatever you want.
Where are we at?
Should you write in front of them?
Yeah, right by the monitor, fine. No, no, no. No, I'm not asking. Stories of these two.
I thought you were starting.
Well, they had a big wedding this week.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll sign at 4:00 on Saturday.
Oh, lovely. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, thank you for coming. Congratulations.
And thank you Kurt and Connie for all the decades, right?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We really have appreciated and loved Sturco. We actually came here when we were 27. So you kind of put a whole yard behind you. Years of service.
I'm not gonna say anything, but I graduated with your youngest, so. I remember all you guys, yes.
But we do know that we have found a great company to work. We need to go in with our drivers. It's gonna be a, just a sweet deal for our drivers also. So thank you so much.
If you guys are okay with it, I have no doubt that it's gonna be great, so.
Yeah.
Well, I thought you were gonna say you wanted drive.
Oh, wait, yeah, we need some more drivers. Aaron back, we'll need Aaron back. Come on, Aaron.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, nice to meet you.
We'll have change in the color of the buses.
All right, we'll move on to C. Consider and adopt the resolution for the designation of the identified official and authority for education. Am I not on the right one?
Identified official.
Identified official with authority for education, identity access management as Belinda Selfers, superintendent of schools. That's a tongue twister. This is a yearly thing as well. It's a yearly thing, so what it does is anybody who needs access to secure reports that the MD website has to come through me and I provide them access or let them know that that's not the information that they would need to. You're just assigning me as the gatekeeper. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. I would seek a motion.
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Ravenhorse, and this is a resolution. So Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Geist?
Aye.
Ms. Kiefer?
Aye.
Mr. Laumann? Mr. Ravenhorse?
Aye.
Mr. Welch?
Aye.
I am for myself. Resolution carries seven, with zero name. Okay, next item on the agenda is D, proposed budget for 2026. And Mr. Shorder's here to present that. Does, Ms. Selfers, does Dee and you go together then?
So he'll present and then the next.
He is the vote?
He is the vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, just making sure I read that right. Okay.
Daniel, just have the advance.
Yep, we'll stay on this one for the majority of it.
Do that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so what we need to do tonight is we need to go through and adopt the preliminary budget for 2025 school year. In your packets, you have the summary page, then the detailed information behind it, and then a little summary at the end of the items that have the most significant changes, whether they be additions or reductions at that point in time. This factors in the reductions that took place back in the spring as we went through that process of working through that. It also has a number of legislative changes that took place too. Not all of them are in here. Some of that information is still yet to come out to us. And we have not released anything really yet as far as detailed information on the impacts of some of those decisions that were made during the special session. But what we do feel took place and what we do know at this time is is being budgeted in this at this point in time. On the unassigned fund balance on the top, so on the July 1st, 2025, those are all of our estimated numbers based off our FY25 budget. We'll finalize those in August, September, as we go through the audit process. So, and then we get revenues, the expenditures. The transfers are dealing with some of our restricted accounts and not that we're going to utilize those, which will then offset some of the expense that are on the sign. And then it leads to our projected equity balance at the end of 2026. And then we have an increase or decrease on the far right side. So on our unassigned, the revenues, we're looking at $23,630,000 and expenditures of $24,185, with about $419,000 in transfer between our restricted accounts. That leaves us with a balance of $2,370,248, which is about 8.61% of our fund balance. So board fund balance policy is to, is to maintain what'd be above the 8%. So this gets us very close to the bottom of that fund balance policy. It's a net decrease, the deficit in our unassigned for the year of $135,291. The next area deals with most of our restricted accounts, so a couple of these we'll touch on a little later as I have a more formal presentation for those items. Operating capital and LTF will be a little bit later here in the meeting. But one of the bigger ones that we had to deal with, partly down with basic skills, one of compensatory revenue. So that was a hot topic type situation legislatively this year. Making a change to the way that they calculate that formula. At this point in time, there is a one-year home harmless that's gonna take place. So we factored that in. We did receive an email today explaining kind of how that's gonna work, but they did not attach any runs to that situation where we can see what the actual impact is at this point. It's supposed to happen next week sometime, but right now, we're staying with $579,472 in basic skills. And we utilize all of that each year, so we'll use that to offset salaries and benefits. Library aid was another one that had some more discussion. That, that was a new thing that came out the last session. They allocated $40,000 to school districts. They have already now slashed that and pulled that back a little bit. So right now, I have $25,000 in there. Again, that's another piece of, we don't exactly have the final amounts on that part yet. But we use that then to just offset some of our costs within our media center. Safe schools generate $36 per student for that. It's about $77,000 revenue. And we have $82,500 expenditures. So some of the things that we do out of there are security cameras, our secure entrances, our cybersecurity insurance, those types of things all come out of that Safe Schools bucket. So we're projecting that'll balance there just over $90,000 left in that account. The teacher comp trading, REDAC stuff, that was a one-time funding piece there. Literacy incentive aid, so back up at the top here. We got that, and then down here, we have literacy aid. So two different things, which tend to confuse us a little bit because there's certain uses for each one, each one of those. But most of that stuff applies towards REDAC type stuff, hiring literacy coaches, those types of things. So that's how we utilize those dollars. And LTF I'm gonna talk about. Student support personnel, that's another one right now that supposedly like library aid is being reduced and pulled back, but I haven't seen any runs on that yet. Apparently don't have anything that falls into that category. It was an eligible expense. There was some really restricted areas on how you can use those funds. So we've carried the $40,000 over for the two years now. If they do pull back on that, not gonna be significant hits to the district because apparently not using it at this point then. And then the last one, medical assistance. So I do have $80,000 in revenue built in there. Small amount of expenditures with a large balance then of $131,270. So that's an area that we're gonna, going to continue to take a look at to see how we can better utilize that. It's restricted really in ways that we can do that. A lot of it's on the special ed side of things, but what we have to be careful is is we reduce our special ed expenditures and use MA dollars, that we potentially run into an issue with maintenance of other type things, how they calculate our special ed revenue. So it's a, it's not a very clean way to do things. It's extremely complex, but it's something during the audit that we look at to try to basically move things around and best utilize our resources as well as begin in that area. But we do have, we've had some pretty significant high need situations that have qualified for that type of stuff. So our, our revenue has taken a pretty good jump. And we, one of the biggest things is to have somebody that can actually submit that stuff and knows what they're doing. That's to pack the battle. And we have somebody right now that's currently able to do that stuff, so we're skinning up pretty good among the rest of that things. Scroll down a little bit here. We're gonna do our assigned funds now, so we still have curriculum in there. Starting at the 1.1, 1.15 million. I have about $80,375 right now in curriculum built into the budget that we would expand. And we have a severance amount of just under $65,000. The levy shortfall, we're bringing $100,000 back in. And then the OPEB loan repayment, $120,000 come out there. That leaves us with a balance of $120,000, so we have one more year before that thing goes away, which feels like it's better off for eternity. So total general fund? Just, just under $26.5 million in revenue and $27.5 million in expenditures. So just over $1 million deficit as our whole general fund goes. But the majority of that is within our long-term. Facility maintenance is at that level by itself, so. So that's it for fund one. Any questions on that at all?
Just to clarify your question. The new legislation, you said there's some that's included in there, some that's still outstanding. Did you, so did you estimate those or are those still coming?
So some of that's estimated, at least I'm just based on my best guess. So some of the stuff that's included in here and I should talk about that, it's the basic aid formula, the big one. So that increase was 2.75% or $200 per gift. So it's now went from $7,000 to $81,000 to $7,481. That one's for sure in that piece, that one's built in there. As I mentioned, the school library that's in there is a reduction. So really, the basic skills is kind of the one that's still hanging out, but that's the largest.
Did you not have?
But I, I had it built in.
You haven't built in it, not?
Yeah, but it's not, so we were scheduled initially to gain, right? So what was happening was when they sent out the initial runs based off the governor's proposal on how they were gonna calculate this. So what was happening was when they sent out the initial runs based off the governor's proposal, how they were gonna calculate this, we had huge swings. Districts were gaining, some districts were gaining upwards of almost 3 million dollars, others were losing that much type of thing. Those were large districts obviously, so, but a lot of your smaller districts were losing. Um, Steuburg would have been a winner on that side of the thing, so. What we did was we kept it basically at where we were versus budgeting that increase. I didn't feel like it was anyway that it wasn't gonna be a whole harmless situation based off the, the huge swings that they were standing between districts, so. I don't know what it'll mean after this one year of holding harmless, they're putting together a committee, which was the same thing they said they were gonna do two years ago and never actually accomplished anything, so. I don't know where it's gonna go from there.
So it's, so is there anything that is, that came through in legislation that we don't have answers for that you didn't least estimate for?
I don't believe so.
I just desire to know if we don't.
So sort of, yeah. And if there isn't, should not be significant, I think, but, um, the big pieces that pretty much then falling forward. With a lot of, I'm asking at this point in time, but really there, from a financial standpoint, it wasn't a ton of changes, obviously the, the big talk was what was gonna be taken away versus how much was gonna be added because there just wasn't anything to work with there, so. Um, once that 2.74, 2.75% took place, you know, everything else after that was pretty much, okay, what are we going to lose going forward and how much is that gonna be, so.
I think what's important to note is in the general fund, when we made those recommendations in April to align our expenses with our revenues, we didn't know that the legislature was going to look at cut to school budgets, right, and school state aid. We made the assumption we were getting to 2.74 in the first year and 3% in the second year, and that was gonna be it. But they also reduced budgets for schools in the way of state aid, and so we're underwater 135,000. Our hope was that we would be at 9% at the end of FY26, now we're gonna be at 8.6. So originally, Mr. Geis knew we're suggesting we should go more than 800, like closer to a million. If we had done 965, we probably would be at 9%. But we did 850, and so it was a total, um, it came out of left field that they were going to be looking at special ed reductions and library aid and student support personnel aid and the compensatory money being less than what we anticipated, we didn't see that coming. Those were not discussions in the legislature in April. That all came out at the end of May. Moving target, mm-hmm. I'm concerned that 8.6 is a concern. Um, there's not a lot between 0.6 and 8.
I think that's kinda what me, you alluding to, being that we're sitting with 0.61 to play with, is there something outlined that could maybe, and just wipe that out now?
So, um, we do not wanna get below 8. That's our policy, that we stay at 8, and we're gonna do everything we can to ensure that, but some of this is out of our control because legislators are making decisions that are impacting our bottom line, so.
What, for people who don't follow, what happens when we get below 8?
Then the board is required to make alignments to get us back above 8. So it won't be recommendations at that point that be required.
It also impacts your ability to borrow.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Bond and everything.
No, no, I'm, no, I'm just speaking out loud, like, yep, it impacts your ability to borrow for, if you had to bond something later on.
Basically, when Mr. Raven, your, your, um, Mr. Ravenhorses is indicating it affects our bond rating, like a credit rating. So if, um, if your policy is to be at 8% and you go below that, the credit ratings of school districts will go down, which makes your interest rates go up if you need to borrow money.
So, a couple of things that are, that are also have to be taken into account here, number one. The first year of, by any means, I was the most difficult to figure out. Number one, they don't finish their job on that, they just still have to do ours on that, so. That's just my shot at, um, politically.
Shoot away.
So, um, that takes place, uh, we also are typically in a situation where we're in contract negotiations with our largest group. So there's an estimate built in there, how that shakes out, that'll drive that number.
Yeah.
So there's those types of things that are still really coming into play. The second year is, uh, is a much, much easier situation because typically your funding is pretty well set. Your contract, the larger contracts are in place, so you're a little bit positioned to know where you're at. So, just some, some extra pieces there to.
Not necessarily easier, but predictable.
A little more good at the point, yeah. Okay, um, food service, Fund Two. So, uh, total food service with about 1.262 million in revenue and just under 1.2 million expenditures, so then balance there, 56,000, uh, uh, increase of just under 65,000 per year. Uh, community service, um, within the community ed piece, so this one right here would be the one that was problematic that we have since fixed with platter time, so. About 1.1 million in revenue and just over that, 1.1 million in expenditures. Uh, an increase in that area of about 30,000 per year, so bringing that balance up to 95,000. Um, ECFE, pretty much, uh, keeping that one up as well, so they start at about 160,000 and then you add 186,000, so the increase is 26. And then school readiness, uh, the one that's been a, an issue is we gained at 118,000 and then you add 193,000 dollar deficit, uh, about 75,000 there, so. What we'll look at too is still in FY25 is now look at the ECFE and the school readiness, so something that's interchangeable. So we will be able to help offset that a little bit. So between the two, we're relatively close to a break even at that point, but, um, still continue to look at the school readiness side of things and try to figure out how we can better get back closer to upper even. I don't know that it's possible necessarily, just based on the way that it's set up and the funding is for that. Um, you'd have to increase your tuition, as I mentioned before. Higher than you'd want to, you'll continue to get kids up here, so. And on that, on that front too, you know, we have another program in the community that is no longer going to be going forward, so. Um, we've seen an increase within the enrollment piece where we're adding another class at this point, so. Numbers there are going up, but we also are having an increase to, uh, sometimes, so. But that's where that piece stands currently, so.
So within that, um, area with school readiness, one of the issues we have is we have significant number of students in our preschool program who would qualify for educational benefits. And, um, the state will give scholarships for those students, but we're capped. And so there's no, what I would prefer is that the legislature would fund all those kids, but they only fund a number, and for us it's about 15, and it's not enough. And so we still don't charge the full rates because they qualify for educational benefits, and that's where we have a loss. And so, um, it's a simple legislative fix, however, it's gonna require funding to do it, and the state of affairs won't let that happen. So, there are voluntary pre-case seats that they fund, and the majority of those go to the cities. Uh, there's rarely any districts on state that get voluntary pre-case dollars. If they could act, if we, if they would let us access those, we would be able to deal with 193,000 dollar deficit there, but. Do you raise rates, then kids can't come, so it's a double edged sword.
Yeah, that'd be quite a raise to make up the difference.
Yeah. Most of that's driven by, um, students who qualify for educational benefits and don't pay for rent. Well, and the communities are the last one preschool program, we don't need to lose another. So, just some comments on that.
Uh, then we have debt service, so this is where we make our bond principal interest payments, so. That service with about 2.8 million in revenue and 2.75 in expenditures, um, maintain a balance there. Just to help offset any potential delinquency taxpayer type situations where maybe we would get all the revenue, but that has never happened within this district. Um, and then the OPEB revocable trust, which is used to pay for retiree benefits. Have 150,000 there, so that's made up of 120,000 dollars from the BCI street payment. And then 30,000 is interest earned on that balance that we have in that account. Um, and then we have expenditures of 61,200, so the reason, if I, I know I mentioned this, but for those who haven't, the reason this negative number is we have to be reported that way within our audit, the government financial type situations, so. That's not actually the amount we have in the OPEB account as far as cash goes, it's more like 1.1 million. This is recording essentially the entire liability that we have offset by the piece, so. Questions?
So Dan, you wanna just clarify that, um, if it's Fund One, Fund Two, Fund Four, or debt service, how that money cannot be moved around outside the funds?
Yep, so Fund One is obviously the most flexible if it's in the Anna sign, basically use it for whatever you want. Restricted accounts all have a certain, certain way they need to be spent. Within that piece, Fund Two has to be spent, obviously, within the food service area. They have started to open the door a little bit on that now. Uh, we're able to pay for lunch tables out of there. Let's see, uh, other, so, one of the other things that they used to do was if you purchased new equipment and you needed to like, put any different electrical in or plumbing or anything like that, you couldn't use Fund Two for that. You had to take that out of Fund One, it made no sense at all, quite possibly with those things. So I order a new oven and I gotta move an outlet and now you gotta, I gotta pay for that on Fund One, okay, it's Fund Two. So, that has changed in some, yes. Um, so there's a little bit of common sense that finally hit in that area. So those types of things. Staffing as far as supervision of the cafeteria type thing, that has been talked about. Um, we'll find out if that was actually truly included in this one or not, and what details come out on that. But that's one that typically hasn't been in the past, so even though they're supervising specifically lunch, you still had to take that out of Fund One as well, so. All right, and then community ed, within community ed, you have the various different buckets of community ed. So the general community ed piece would be, um, platter time, any community ed classes offered. Those types of things for whether it be students or adults. Um, and then ECFE would be any of our early childhood family ed programming, um, which is in addition to really the school readiness preschool program. And then, and then the school readiness is strictly in this year preschool program, that's housed in this building. And then debt service, there's not really anything you can do with that, that's basically their what you money to pay off principal interest center bonds. If it gets, if the 645 gets too high, there's a formula that's been used to pull that back, and essentially return it through the levy process that way, so.
Do you wanna go through the needs or go to the summary page?
Uh, you can go to the summary page, unless somebody has a question, I can hear that. There's a lot of detail there, a lot of different line items.
Here we go.
So the enrollment we use is 1941, um, that's K-12 enrollment. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the basic formula increased there, um, so that generates a total of 437, uh, 435,000 based on our current enrollment that we have. Um, I mentioned the school library aid and the REDAC, uh, student support aid co-op, so we get, we get student support aid for us, and we also get it for the co-op for Zed. Okay, so instead of sending it directly to Zed, we go, make way too much sense, they send it to the school districts. Zed would then bill us, we would send it to them, so basically it was that. There, my understanding is that's going to go away and they're going to send that money directly to use that now. So we won't have to play the middleman anymore on that piece. Special education aid, so we have an increase there even though they're looking at cutting special ed transportation by 5% in '26 and 10% in '27. Along with also having to find 250 million dollars in special ed savings, um, over the next biennial, next year only, biennial, right? If they don't find that, then that will prorate our special ed revenue even more, so. So I'm still expecting us to still receive more evidence in special ed just because our special ed numbers continue to fly, so. Then we do have other state aids, the last, this last fiscal year, we received our solar project reimbursement from the state, so that was a one thing. General levy usually does deal with prior levy adjustments as those come through. Student fees, we do have an increase there due to the open enrollment transportation fee, the activity fee increases, and also the ACT fee. Um, that's being added, and then insurance recovery was for the central roof here. Payable received this last fiscal year that we put that one in for. On the expense side, 49,000 dollar increase in administrations, those are salary increases. License instruction, um, same thing there, salary increases, it doesn't, so normally our license instruction salary would be higher than that, but this is now taking into account reductions that also took place in there as far as staffing goes. Um, speech pathologists, salary increases for those individuals. Uh, paraprofessionals, same thing, this license instruction, we did have the salary increases built in, um, as well as the funding from the staff reductions that took place. End of assistance salary reduction there, 40,000, so that's incorporating the increase as well as the reduction of the one straight up assistant position that we had. Then TRA, so even though we're cutting spec transportation and all kinds of other things, TRA pension rates are gonna increase. And be paid for by the state, so, uh, it's going from 8.75 to 9.81%. So that, that was, part of that 128,000 dollar increase is that percentage increase, the rest of it is tied to the increased amount of salary that we have. Health insurance, we budget that based on the current enrollment. Fees for services, we've got some contracted service pieces that have been reduced as well as, uh, reducing some LTFM projects that we uh, would have done in this past fiscal year. Co-op student support, that's just the offset to the revenue, so, uh, budget neutral in that area. I've estimated an increase in property insurance of 22,000. That would not enough, who knows? Um, that one's been something that's been increasing quite significantly in the last few years. Um, and then 80,000 on the repairs and maintenance for some of the LTFM projects, I'll go through that stuff a little bit later. Um, and then we had 167,000 reduction in payments to private agencies, so teachers on call, we have our, some of our parents were working directly for them. So some of that has changed, where they're now moving to the district side, and we're also, we also reduced one pair on the TLC piece. And then equipment, 43,000 dollar increase there, and that is some capital equipment, which we will also talk about later on in the agenda.
Any questions for Dan?
The TRA contribution, um, you said that was the state's picking that up, or what is, I thought, I misheard that, that.
State's paying for the increase.
State's paying for the increase.
Or they are, on our side. So then that.
But they're not, they're not increasing that one, it's.
Okay, so this is an expense of 128, that the state is compensating this for, okay?
Is that, uh, it seems like.
Well, it's not, this is, that increases in all of that. Well, it's not, this is, that increases in all of that. So some of this is still tied to our, our salary increases.
Sure, sure.
So you've got, you've got 8.75.
I was looking at the percentage more than the dollar.
Yeah.
Um, is that a comp, that seems like a large increase from that. I don't know what, you know, the past and prior, but the 1.6.
So they went.
Like a lot.
So I think the last time they did it, so it used to be at 7.5, I think. Then it went like 0.25 for, I think, four years increase. And then now it's making a sizable, sizable jump. And they're also bringing back the lowering their full retirement benefits to 60 and 30 years of experience. So 60 years of age and 30 years of experience. Which is, so originally they had 9.5%. When they lowered that full retirement age down, they added another 0.31 in to cover that change. So, which, for us, 0.31 is a, but it's back to that across the entire state.
Right.
It's a few million dollars more.
Thank you.
So you would do E at this point before we get into LTFM? Are there any other questions about the proposed budget? What we vote? Okay. I would seek a motion to consider and approve the proposed budget for fiscal year '26.
So, second.
Sorry, Mr. Laumann, were you first? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Laumann and a second by Mr. Geist. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Dan. But you can stay right there. Cause next item on the agenda is long-term facility maintenance tenure plan. And we will be voting on this after.
All right, so this is the annual thing that we do every year. Is to approve this, put this in place, and then this will end up on the levy in the fall. And it will go into effect for fiscal year '27. So, what we have, so for LTFM, it's based off our adjusted pupil units, which right now is the 2188 number. The district average building age, which is 43.21, the formula is 380. That equates to 831,288. So, these numbers I'm moving forward are the next, essentially based for the next 10 years. So, they don't change anything with your pupil units, even though that's not realistic. But, um, you have no way to know for the next 10 years really where you're gonna end up. And frankly, we don't really care about it that far. So, um, okay, go back to the left. So scrolling down, keep going. So here's our total LTFM revenue for individual, for our district projects, 1.391 million. Scroll down on that. That makes sure all the breakdowns of what comes into play as far as how much is aid, how much is levy, how much is going towards debt service? So we did the projects for the air handling units and all that stuff. There's a portion of our LTFM revenue now that goes to Fund Seven debt service to pay off those funds that we sold to them. So, going down, yep. So over here then, you can see total general fund revenue. And then you can see how much of this is levy and how much of it is aid. Right now, we don't have any aid until FY '28. And then this is how much will be levy as well. So, we go with no aid all the way through 31 or 32. Oh, 34 actually, before it stops, it goes away again. So what ends up happening is there's an equalization type factor that comes into play here. And we have some of our old facility bonds that we got a long time ago finally falling off after FY '27. Sometimes some of the state aid equalization comes back and plays. Um, and then it'll go away again in '34 at that point. So, that's the revenue side of it. And then, I know it's small print, but. This is a, this is a state form. They just smashed up so much stuff in the one document. This is a one page then that shows the expenditures over the course of the next 10 years. So, these will be our health and safety things that we have in play here. We have a base year of what we budgeted, FY '26, what we're currently budgeting. And then I project that out for the next 10 years. A lot of these don't change. Um, they're just estimates at that point in time. If we know something that's gonna come up, like we know we're gonna do a, I don't know, asbestos project or something like that, I go ahead and build that in. Okay, you can scroll down. So here's our, excuse me, indoor air quality. That would have been what's remaining in FY '25 for the construction projects at Bonner and the high school, the air hangings, and all that type of stuff. And this is what we would have in FY '26 to utilize going forward. We'd be at 44. Follow that down. These are the deferred maintenance categories that we would have under LTFM. So one of the new ones that's being added in from the last legislative decision is the roof system now. So, you could charge roof repairs to LTFM in the past. But now if you have one that exceeds 100,000, you can go ahead and levy for that amount beyond where you're currently getting in LTFM. Okay, so that's a, that's a change that's been talked about for a number of years and was finally put in place. This, so.
Penny?
It says penny because this document came out before their special session was over. So, but my understanding is that that one's in there. So, um, that'll have a pretty significant impact on a lot of the streets that are still. They're sort of in a bad shape and just trying to patch and get by. So, but strategically too, then they're gonna have to look at their levies and know how to best manage that situation so you don't have huge increases and decreases and that type of stuff. So, so yeah, those are all the deferred maintenance situations that we put into place. And then that gets us down here, a little bit farther. So here's our beginning fund balance in Fund One. How much revenue we're gonna get, how many expenditures and that's our balance going forward. So we do drop in FY '26 into the negative amount. Projected at this point in time, hoping that this won't take place. But LTFM can go negative if it needs to. Um, there's no penalty or anything like that for doing that. But as you see then, as we go forward, that balance thing continues to grow again. As long as we don't have any unforeseen issues pop up. But that's our intent, is to go ahead and build that LTFM balance back up. This would be your Fund Six. So, starting in FY '25, that was the balance remaining. This is interest earned. This is also, this is the amount of expenditures so far today in FY '25 that we have spent. Means we can carry over a balance of that and then I put in a full expenditure on it. At some point we can just throw that construction piece out. That's it from the expenditure side.
Any questions for Dan on LTFM revenue and expenses? This is the resolution. Can we vote? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Ravenhurst. And a second by Mr. Geist. Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Geist?
Aye.
Ms. Keever?
Aye.
Mr. Laumann?
Aye.
Mr. Ravenhurst?
Aye.
Mr. Welch?
Aye.
And I for myself. Motion carries seven with zero and eight. Okay. The last piece is capital outlay. Okay, yep, the last. I'm gonna make a bigger damn big on the capital outlay budget. But I don't see. Oh, it's just this one's together. This one's a presentation. It's just a word she didn't do. Okay.
This, this is all actually already built in. There's a bunch of that you approved as well. But we're going into kind of detail of showing what that's, what there is. I think you still wanna approve it even.
Yeah.
Even though. So operating capital, on that side, beginning fund balance is 633,000. So we bring in about 329,000 in revenue. Plus we also have the re-s levy piece with ZED, so that's another 206,000 in revenue. Going through that. I did add on here, it is not currently in the FY '26 budget, but I added that now. Forgot about that piece, but the Eagle Rock donation will happen for the next 10 years. So there will be 15,000 in revenue coming into the capital. Balance in FY '26. So expenditure side, we got technology. So we had 45,000 from the instructional devices. And then one-to-one laptops, another 65,000. So, technology basically has 110,000 to work with and how they spread that between the various different buckets. It's kind of up to them based on the need in that current year. So, um, that number's been 110,000 for many years, even though prices have gone up, they still manage to make that 110,000 worth. So, there's the ZED building lease, 206,000. Then buildings are ground, so we have cafeteria tables at the high school, 22 of those, 57,211. And that's gonna get totaled to Fund Two, so it will not, I have it on here as a capital, but it will not actually go to operating capitals. We'll take that out of Fund Two now that that's allowed expenditure. And we have 1,000 for menstrual products. We have more with attachments at Bonner for 32,000, Laris Ranger for 8,000. So what we do on, on that and also, uh, device more, we have the Bobcat. So on those, typically we'll run those for a while and then we'll go trade in type of situation on those. So that's what we did there. Then we have the high school gym leechers at 135,000. That's part of that Eagle Rock donation. And then portable leechers at 98,000. Each building has a designated capital account that they have available if they need it beyond something that's already been approved. And these are the instructional items that were requested and approved. So library technology equipment, 2030 there, so we're changing from Selco, which is no longer going to happen, to a new program. And part of that is getting some new updated technology computers and that to be able to utilize that. BCI, we have some morph instruments. Bonner has some classroom rugs and a standing whiteboard and we got some, we got a baritone and a music podium and then some classroom tables and chairs at the high schools as well. Then our activities, we have our athletic uniforms, our helmet recognition, the gym chairs and cart. And then the high jump, pole vault standards, hurdles, that's zeroed out. We're taking the year off and also for a while there, we were doing eight a year of recycling and some of that old crappy ones out of there. So we're, I've been told we're okay on that right now, so we took that back out. And then we have two portable scoreboards at 9,290. So, our total capital expenditures, 531,846. And then the lease of 206,000. So that gets us to a projected ending fund balance of 445,000 in capital. These are just some of the designated balances that we have on some things that we know ultimately have to happen. Made instruct, which I think's been on this list for 15 years. We keep kicking that can, which is, they're okay with it still, why not to? Toro wing mower, which we're putting away a little bit there for one of those at some point in time. Cause I believe we do one of those. Somewhere between 80 and 120,000. I know that's beef's tread, but.
They are stashing a little bit away?
We are trying to because we know that at some point in time. Yeah, we're probably gonna need one. Music instruments then, in FY '27, we'll start to allocate 5,000 and ultimately what they do is then they determine what they need and what they can fit in that 5,000 that has to be replaced. And then same thing occurs. Questions on operating capital?
Okay.
Part of that they can have is that 135,000 we put out for the 15 every year.
Yep.
What about Sam?
Yeah, so that 135,000 coming back in. Beyond this, but it's a show right now. Yeah, just gotta up from that one.
Thank you. For all three presentations, for all your time. We appreciate it. Uh, we would, we need a motion to approve the capital outlay budget.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Ravenhurst. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Before you move on, could I just take a moment to recognize Dan's diligent attention to the work that he does, the consistent focus that he has on managing our revenues and expenditures. With the late, um, release of the funding stream, the amount of time and effort that he's dedicated at the end of July here to get this all pulled together has been tremendous. And even though I encourage him not to spend midnight and weekends doing this work, I know that that was happening. And I just really appreciate his focus on Stuartville and doing what he feels is in our best interest to keep our finances operable and in good condition. So kudos to Dan for all of the time and everything he puts into this.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Next item on the agenda is I consider and approve the authorization for administration to sell and/or dispose of the gymnastics equipment and supplies in accordance, accordance with policy 802. And this is a decision and discussion. Prior to the board meeting, we did hear from some committee members and gymnasts on the importance of gymnastics in our community ed program. And how beneficial that would be to keep around for the younger girls and our high school program. That vote had already been passed previously in the spring when we did cuts. But tonight we're talking about to sell and/or dispose of gymnastic equipment and supplies. And discussion. Do you guys have anything yet?
I think we need to pump for it. So, is there, is there a buyer lined up already? We have people that want it?
We can engage until you get the questions. There's a, um, the board could enter, if anybody would like to make a motion. I'm not sure, can Chair make a motion? Uh, you would amend this, you'd make a motion to amend this. So, I'm gonna try. I, as Chair, I haven't made a motion yet. So I would make a motion to amend aye. And I would like to make a motion to amend aye. And then I would change it to, please help me someone if I need it. I would like to keep, I would like administration, administration to make the decision to keep the equipment necessary to keep the community ed program going in Stuartville. So they can sell what equipment isn't needed for the community ed program.
Who would make that?
Administration or.
So you authorize them to?
Yeah, I would authorize.
If you're gonna authorize them to sell something, sell something that they can develop.
Yes.
That wouldn't be impactful to the community ed program.
That wouldn't be impact. So, did I, okay, so I would make a motion that, Chrissy, I'm sorry. That's essentially what I said. I just, it's too hot in my room.
I would make a motion to.
What do you have?
Okay, just, what are you gonna say?
Make a motion that administration can sell and/or dispose of the gymnastics equipment not needed to operate the community ed program of gymnastics. And I'm, that might be my motion, and then I would need a second.
So the intent is to make sure that the community ed gymnastics program stays alive?
Correct. Of that motion, yes.
I would second that.
I have a motion by Ms. Raymaker and a second by Ms. Cook.
Can we read the motion back?
She's still writing.
Yeah, I am too, I just wanted to make sure we're lined up.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Raymaker and a second by Ms. Cook, too.
So are we amending the, are we just making a motion? Or amending aye to change it that administration can sell or dispose of equipment not needed, but keep what is needed to run the community ed, that community ed program?
So here's what I have.
Tell me, because I.
Motion by, second by, and I don't have the needs, to approve the authorization for administration to sell and/or dispose of gymnastics equipment and supplies not needed for community ed gymnastics program. To continue, yep.
So.
Do you have a motion or a second?
Motion and a second.
As long as we have that motion and a second, is everybody aware of what the motion is before we go forward?
Who has the decision, no?
We do, people know.
On the equipment?
Oh, administration, whatever administration, so whatever, whatever's not needed. If there is no more.
Do we know what is needed or not?
That needed administrative decision. Yeah, that's not our decision.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
I would imagine there are gonna be discussions between them.
So we have community ed director, community ed coordinator, an athletic director, business manager, myself.
Be able to.
Maybe consult with.
No, nobody knows right now exactly what we call. Until they decide what is needed to run. We need to authorize them to make those decisions first. Like I said, I think the whole intent here is to make sure that the community ed gymnastics program stays going.
I have a motion and a second. To authorize administration to sell whatever equipment isn't needed for community ed program to keep going. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is twelve, superintendent update.
So I have an enrollment update for you, this would be the last enrollment, we just put it together last Thursday. Uh, the high school ended with five eighty-eight, the middle school four seventy-eight, Bear K four forty-one, and Dollar Elementary High Seventeen, with the total enrollment of nineteen twenty-four. I did want to spend a little bit of time on the legislative update, and as you learned in Dan's presentation, the inflationary increase will be two point seven four for FY twenty-six and three point oh percent for FY twenty-seven. This is the only increase we'll see at state aid. Um, this inflationary increase was included in our projections that we did in April. There are several areas of state aid in which reductions were made by the legislators. When we made our recommendations in April, these were not included. We did not have an awareness that this was gonna happen until the end of May. So when those revenues were cut, we didn't correspond with expenditures in the same way. So what we're going to see is we're projecting that compensatory aid is gonna go down almost fifty-four thousand dollars. Then there'd be no change in FY twenty-seven, that's what we're hearing. And again, this is from the Minnesota House release, not MDE. What happens is between the legislative release and MDE, MDE interprets all the legislation and then they figure out what the amounts will be, but projected is fifty-four thousand dollars less. We're still gonna have these expenses, which means this fifty-four thousand comes out of our general plan. Special ed, whereas anticipating an increase of forty-three thousand in the first year, seventy-one thousand in the second year for a hundred and fourteen over two years, less revenue than what we thought we'd get. The library is seventeen five in the first year, eighteen one in the second year, for almost thirty-six thousand over two years. Student support aid is almost forty-one thousand in year one, just under forty thousand in year two, but just over eighty thousand for the total. Hundred and fifty-five thousand less in revenue, Dan's budget was a hundred and thirty-five less in over expenditures, but that compensatory number's gonna be the one that drives that. Hundred and twenty-nine is anticipated for FY twenty-seven reductions, and then the total reductions over the two years is two eighty-four. This decrease in revenue is likely gonna result in more alignments next spring. And I'm anticipating anywhere from two fifty to three hundred in alignments, that means we'll need to reduce our expenditures going into FY twenty-seven by that amount at a minimum. Because already next year, we're gonna be spending more than what we get. So we'll be upside down in FY twenty-six, and then in the spring of twenty-six, what this board will have to decide is how to rectify that, being upside down and spending in the negative. And then to prevent spending in the negative for FY twenty-seven. So it's not all good news, we're very grateful for the increase in state aid, but feel a little blindsided by the reductions that were passed by the legislature. We did not see that coming. Any questions?
So in the budget proposal, enrollment nineteen forty-one.
Yep.
And then this is obviously nineteen twenty-four, which if it's like seven thousand, what, like a hundred and twenty-some thousand, even shorter? Potentially, if that's what our enrollment is in the fall.
What, do you anticipate that in the year of Stewartville? Will that go up, do you think? I mean, historically, does that go up by the timescale, like who starts from the end?
I'm gonna give credit to Dan on this, he's done an amazing job of pinpointing wherever you plan for enrollment, and he's within less than five.
It was not so.
You should run for the article.
Till you don't, right? Well, I mean, you don't make up twice.
But we knew our enrollment, our recommendations in April were based on that projected enrollment that Dan had. So you made adjustments for that. What we didn't adjust for is this.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and I keep going back to what Mr. Geist said. We should go closer to a million, and you know, we administratively felt like that was just too much, but in the end now, eight fifty and one fifty is one million. You were right on the nose. Yes, he's speechless. So you may not hear it often, but you were right.
You were right, right?
Oh, shoot. Well.
What's, what's left?
That's a good question.
That's, it's tough.
So I mean, just, just so the community realizes, what, what's left? Okay, let's spend another three hundred and fifty thousand, so we make sure we don't call below eight percent. And I said three fifty, probably should be four fifty, so we have some sort of cushion.
Well, you gotta start making up for twenty-seven.
You know, and I've, Dan did make a various due point, the second year of the biennium is easier because we know all the numbers.
Yeah.
The first year of the biennium, this is kind of surprising to me, we just, I never anticipated they would reduce us.
It's just, what's left, I think nothing's safe, I mean.
More, more tough decisions, to be fair.
Very tough decisions.
I would say, you know, people say you're trimming fat, well, there's no fat, it's all meat, right? So that's what's left, we don't know what it is, but it will be important and impactful, so.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Elpers.
Yes.
Um, item thirteen tonight, board committee updates. Facilities. Need to prefer just negotiations.
Yeah, um, so we have one negotiations meeting scheduled with the teachers, I have not gotten confirmation from the SESPs or the SAAPs at the date yet. Local seventy is willing to wait until those three groups are done, so. I just gotta move on to policy? Yes, yes. So, there'll be many, many policies now coming down the pipe, most of them are gonna be legislative changes based on statute. Those are pretty easy, we learned from MSBA that you can do those in one meeting instead of have first reading, second reading. If they're based on statute, we can't have policy that conflicts with statute, statute would supersede that policy anyway. So as Laura and I read through those, we'll re-bringing those forward, I don't think it'll be July, there's a lot, and so we'll be looking to do that in August and September.
Beginning of the year. Okay, is there any other board committee updates?
We meet, so that has a meeting this.
Okay.
I went to the last meeting, I'm trying to remember what happened, I had notes and I came back. Um, there was a lot of end of, end of year stuff, so they were going over, like, you know, graduations and stuff like that. There wasn't like anything really major, the decision and purchases, stuff like that, because I think the meeting that I'd done, I had notes of an old meeting back in February where they bought a van, but. I don't, there wasn't a whole lot, it was a lot of, it was a good meeting because it was a lot of feel-good stuff, end of year, you know.
Yeah.
I went to the online governing board meeting too, and it was, um, enrollment increased, there are open classes, you know, nothing just shattering, but just, you know, kind of same end of year, here's what our numbers were, this was, you know, something new, whatever, popular, that's everything, so. Nothing major to share, but their numbers have found out, so.
Awesome, thank you for the updates. Um, next item on the agenda would be adjournment, I would seek the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Laumann and a second by Mr. Geist. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold same sign, meeting is adjourned at eight twenty PM.